I'll call the commission immediately. Have secretary please call the room.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
Presiding Commissioner.
Present. Shall all join me with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All right. Nice rainy day. We approved the consent agenda. We get approval of today's agenda that the lineup will stay exactly the same. We have no financials, but we have several minutes that will be approved. And we have January 16th regular session, January 21st regular session, the 23rd of January regular session, and the 28th of January regular session. So.
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it passes. So the first thing on the agenda today is purchasing manager Ms. Kim. And we're talking about a contract renewal. And Ms. Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a contract renewal for RFP 2023-3, Document Technology Solutions for Restoration Services. This is the second renewal for the Document Technology Solutions for Restoration Services for Sutterfield Technologies. The Recorder of Deets mainly uses this contract. The contractor may perform the following services, which include but not limited to: digital conversions from different print forms, indexing, microfilm creation, book reprinting, archival book restoration, and offsite and onsite document scanning. There's not going to be any increase in the price from 2024, and we would recommend that you approve the contract renewal for Sutterfield Technologies. And of course, the Recorder of Deets Hall is here if you have any questions for her.
Very good. Any comments or questions?
Nope. The recorder operates that software. She's good with it, and it's passed our muster through internal. I'm fine. I'd make a motion that we adopt the renewal.
Okay, we got a motion. And we got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I tell you what, I really like these contract renewals when the price stays the same. Can you imagine? Most companies try to raise the price every year. They try to raise the price every year, so our county sure appreciate that. Very good. The next item on the agenda is again Ms. Kim. And we're doing a contract award on the change.
Change Finder software. So what this is.
Mr. Daniel.
The assessor's office currently uses Pictometry, which they're doing business as Eagleview for aerial photography, and they work with Gray County and Springfield. But Change Finder is made by Pictometry, but it is not, we've never used it before. And so Change Finder software, again, made by the same company that we do our aerials with, but it allows for the assessor to see the changes from the one assessment to another. And it's user-friendly. You can go on about Assessor Gray if you'd like, but it's just for assessment verification. Johnson County has used this Change Finder software, and they actually bid it out, competitively bid it. And so we are using their contract for our competitive to be compliant with the law. And so we ask that, or we recommend that you approve the contract for Pictometry, doing businesses Eagleview for the Change Finder software.
Now, is this something that you just have the ability to compare side by side? Or is this something that automatically triggers you that there's been change from year to year?
What change, what we pay them for. It's programmed that they actually have that compares two sets of aerials, 22 versus 24 that we just flew. And so they notate those changes. They send us a list of those. But we also have the availability to look at that also.
Okay, so they're going to send you a list of what they noticed as changes?
Usually that list will, we have done this before. We've used it three other times over the course of years. We do it almost every time we fly. We'll have a lot, five thousand changes. Most of those we've gotten. We've gotten through building permits and things. What it does, though, it lets us clean up a lot of the old stuff or where people didn't get building permits and stuff. That way, we know it's there. We fix it. We go take a look at it. We don't do anything with them except build looks. It does pick up some things sometimes, like if you move a trailer from one side of the yard to the other, it'll pick that up because it's different in those two sets of aerials. But it's very beneficial for us as far as accuracy is concerned because obviously a lot of things occur that we don't see. And so it just makes it right. Dollar-wise, it's not, we don't get a lot of stuff out. We will get something, but for the accuracy factor, we still have, we pick up probably 50, 60, 70 new structures that people failed to get building permits from. So it's pretty beneficial.
Very interesting.
It's about accuracy.
Okay.
Yeah, this guy doesn't lie.
Yeah, I think that's very important, so. All right, need a motion and a second.
I would make the motion to award the contract to Finder software.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you very much. Good job, guys. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Amber, Employee Services Director. We're going to be talking about policy updates. Okay, good morning.
Good morning. You should have in front of you, I emailed it. I thought it out yesterday fairly early. I think I got you 24 hours.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
The first one is actually not a change. The weather closure and emergency closing, the option that I had presented on Tuesday, was if you wanted to change it. I didn't want to not include it to not be confusing, but actually, it's not a change if you leave it as it is. However, I know that you weren't a fan of it, so I was trying to not just bypass it and say this is what you wanted to do. So that's the first one. The second one is a proposed change, and it is actually not necessarily a change. It's a clarification of our special circumstance pay hours. Trying to, I mean, I believe it's what it said previously, but it definitely makes it clearer now to say that the intention of the policy is to just look at hours where it is considered an emergency, and there's hours of non-payment to the employee, which would be PTO or holiday. And that's when you want to, that's the only time you could override. If you don't want to make, if you don't want to include this, there's just no way to override it. You would fall to the fair labor law. And our other policy that says we don't pay for time. You don't pay, you don't consider hours not worked part of your pay. So if you leave it in, that gives the out, is what I'm saying. So that's that one. Do you want to do these one at a time?
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
Yeah, now that I'm like, okay.
Yeah, we'll do one at a time, so we'll start with the first one. And we'll see if commissioners have any comments or questions. And then I want to make sure that from out there, any of our employees or the public has any comments or questions. So let's do the first one. Does everybody understand the first one? We don't need to read that again.
Just to make it clear, the first one, the proposed was the update, was keeping it as in when people, we close a late start, then the employees get paid. The pay is currently.
Yeah, there's no change.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Okay, how about out there? Is there anybody that wants to ask a question or before we take a motion and vote? Okay, seeing none.
You don't need to have a motion for leaving.
Okay, all right.
So I will remove that. When I extend the final to Maddie, I will remove that. That's no change.
Okay, perfect. No change on that one. Okay.
Now, the second one would be you would have to, I, so what I have presented to you is simply a clarification of what you already have. So it is changing the wording, but not the content. It's clarification. But your option is to approve the change or to exclude it completely. Just everybody, you guys get that.
And just so we're clear, the change is just a clarification in the wording because we had some confusion on what some of that meant. Correct, yeah.
Yes, and I didn't write it.
No, you didn't write it.
But it is. I mean, sometimes you, sometimes even I can write a policy that I think is, you know, ironclad, and then someone else will read it and give their interpretation. And I'm like, hmm, I guess you could see it that way. We got to make sure that we.
That's a good thing about it. We can look at it, see it, fix it, and go forward.
But no, this just makes the verbiage clearer. But you do have, when I propose these to you, I do think you need to change it. You do have the option of saying, I don't even, you can remove it as well, which would get, take away any ability to override. You can't if you don't have a policy.
Okay.
You shouldn't.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? How about out there? Any elected official or employee that have a comment or question? Can we get a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion to make the change for the wording in the special circumstances pay hours to as proposed in policy update number two.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I think it passes. And I think this is important. One of the things that I think Ms. Amber and I were talking about as we made a decision last week with the bad weather was the fact that some, sometimes just improving the wording and clarifying what we really meant was important. So I think as we've gone through all these, I think we've made some improvements. And that's always good for all of us, all employees. Okay, so next one.
Next one is the travel and meal allowance policy. We went with this change where we are making same-day travel a $15 lunch. If you'll notice, the last sentence of the same-day travel paragraph is what I added based on a direction from Tuesday. And Amy helped me with this because we have to word it like this. Trips lasting more than 12 hours but do not include an overnight stay, we're going to give them what we call a full-day travel allowance at $30.
So a full day still wouldn't include breakfast.
No.
I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't go, well, full day would mean all meals, so I just want to make sure.
That's why we did it. Because if you go to the next part where it's overnight travel, the day that you have overnight stay, you get 40 days, but your travel day is paid at 75%, which is $30. So you can't have a travel day paid more than that.
I just wanted you to explain that.
Not matches.
Absolutely.
And you are upping the lunch to $15, which we agreed. Yes, it's, $30 is going to be hard, but you're going to eat anyway.
Commissioner Jackson, he can do really good on $5, $7, and $9 Taco Bell boxes.
Well, then I'll just have them.
I can dine on a budget, so.
So he can do.
Have him reach out.
I just think this is mainly for the hourly people who were asking to go away to do something. Let's give them some sort of stipend because we are taking everyone to eat from home. So I think that that's what you're really trying to cover here. Also, the clarification is meant to be in here that same-day meal allowances go through the payroll office. Overnight per diem goes through the auditor's office. And the rewrite should make that more clear because you can't, you can't be double taxed. And those are the IRS rules.
Correct.
And no receipts for meals will, are going to be, we can't, we don't accept those. That's why we're going with the basic flat rates.
I think all the changes and clarifications are very good on this one. So need a motion?
I'll make the motion to change the travel and meal allowance policy proposed as policy update number three. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
All right. The last one, proposed policy change I brought you. You'll notice there are two options. The first option is the one that I proposed. It does not, it lets people get to the first threshold of bumping their PTO accrual at five years. I liked that because that's when you get your MAC award for your first service award. And I think that that's a good benchmark to let people get. Also, in a generation of people who don't necessarily stay someplace for very long, I think that it's definitely an incentive. On the other end of that, I added 20 years plus because there are people who do stay here a long time. And I think on the other end of that, they should be given some sort of incentive or really reward for their service. So I added an extra 40 hours to that so they get another week. And I said it on Tuesday. I'll say it again. If you've been here 20 years, I think you can have an extra week of vacation. But that is your call. Because right now, it drops off at 15 years and it ends at the 208 hours. So that is an adjustment. Now, the next one I am going to give Maddie credit for. Maddie created the second one because it follows along the line of all of the MAC service awards. But it does, it does increase to where there is a substantial, it keeps going, and it increases substantial. And that is because you don't want to penalize anybody. So you had to be careful not to, somebody who's already hit a current threshold we have of like eight years. Gosh, I can't remember what it's current. We have just so many. But you don't want to penalize them. So you'd have to grandfather them. If you grandfathered them in, you're actually giving an unfair distribution of benefits outside of your policy, and I don't like that either. So these are the two options.
And I think that was a big thing we had spoke about, was worrying about the, how we're going to balance and make it fair for the current employees where it's not going to change if we went with option two. Where option one, we wouldn't need to do that. Is that correct?
No, option one you don't. I mean, no, both of these are not going to hurt anybody.
Right.
Or no, nobody's penalized. And either option, people are getting more for their service.
Correct, that's right.
I will tell you in full transparency, I have had two elected officials tell me that 288 hours is too much for their 20. Because you, when you have some small offices and they're gone, that's just another week of coverage. So we, it's, you really can't tweak that down without penalizing someone. I like the idea of having the benchmark of everybody knowing when they hit it, they're getting more. I did like that part of it. But I think that the first option is just, you're changing it for the five and you're changing it for the 20.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, I'm not sure which. I mean, I see Assessor Gray's head bouncing up and down back there. But when you, when you kind of short-staff your building, you're creating more PTO that's going to have to be put out because some people are going to have to cover those hours or those duties. And I think it can be very stressful going too far. So I agree.
If you go with option one, I am going to change it to how Maddie put it because I think five-plus years at 61 months makes more sense. I didn't fix mine to match yours, but I do, I do like that.
Because the system views your service based on months, not years. So it's hard to explain the tiers unless you just look at it by month.
And that, we did add the asterisk that you can see underneath each one so they understand they're not going to update until the month that your anniversary is completed.
Correct, that's guaranteed.
So my anniversary might be the 11th of October. But it's not going to change until I've completed a whole month. And actually, it's more of a pay cycle, but we didn't really want to get in any trouble.
Any other thoughts or comments from any of the elected officials on length of service, either option one or option two? Any thoughts on that?
I think, I think the policy proposed by the HR director, modifying the second line, six years, changing that to five-plus years, would be my preference. I mean, these are, these are really good benefits for our employees. I mean, you can be here one year and you're qualified for pretty good vacation.
You get to start using PTO at 90 days.
Yes. So I mean, you're looking at a three-week right out of the gate.
If you do nothing, absolutely.
And that's a, that's a very big incentive for a lot of places. You may have to work five years before you get two weeks, so.
It's intended to be two weeks vacation and five days of sick, is what it is. But we blanket it so you can use it however you'd like.
Yeah. Because there's a new law where you have to give sick hours.
We don't, we just blanket it.
Right, that's why.
Nobody wants to police that.
No.
And some days I might not be sick. I just might be sick after work. The fact you did, we'll fix a break.
All right, well, I will accept a motion.
I'd move that we accept the first table with the slight change of making it five-plus years instead of six years.
I will fix that.
You fix that.
Yeah.
That would be my motion for proposed policy change number four.
They will second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
On the about-last pages are not ones that are brought to you frequently because they're not going to be, they're really just changing. The first one is the recording of work hours. The current is in the black, and you will see that we say, if you keep paper time sheets, that you have to turn them into the payroll clerk. Well, that is not our process, so our policy should match what we actually do. So Maddie does not take any sort of time sheets. However, for auditing purposes, if you are choosing not to use our timekeeping system and you are using paper copies, talk to the auditor. We do think that they should be retained by whoever is doing, like their department head. And then it will need to be retained for three years. I don't think that this is going to be an issue because there's two places I think who do that, track them in another way. I mean, it's just going to, no one's going to be penalized for not doing it. We're just saying from this point forward, this is what we're going to do. Or use the timekeeping. It doesn't really change, I mean, I did maybe reword it for some clarity. There's no content change. Yeah, bless you. There's no content change outside of who's going to retain those records.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that clarification? We need a motion to approve this.
I'd make a motion to approve the suggested change as presented.
Okay, great. We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Now, the last two, I don't really think need a vote, but I am telling you that when I roll the section employees, it is a change. Holiday observed, paid, those sentences are not new. I just changed the sequence in which they were written because somebody read it to me in another way, and I thought that is a way that you can interpret that differently. So I changed, literally did not change a word except for the sequence of the sentences. And I'll say it is because if an employee misses a holiday due to a compressed working week, they may substitute it to another day as time off. But it is your, you know, what we, you will prove that department head or elected officials have to approve the substitute day based on the office or the needs of their department. But it is the intent of the commission that they do that in the same paid period. So that is, and the way that that was worded before did not give guidance of when you expected it to be.
Making it look like you got current, keep saving.
Because that's not the intent.
True.
We don't mean bank it and use it.
Because we didn't use comp time anyway, so.
No, you shouldn't be able to use holiday in the same way. So it's the intent to give the employees the holiday off. And holidays expire. You only get, whatever you guys approve for holidays for the year, that is, an hourly rate has been calculated, and everybody gets a bank for that. People who work by the holiday schedule have to use it on that day. The only time that they would be able to move it is if because they work the compressed schedule. You see what I mean? Only the people who work a 24-hour rotating schedule can use the holiday. But they all, they have parameters too. They can only use it 30 days before and 30 days after if they're scheduled for it, which is all spelled out. The only, we're making no change to that. I am just, I'm not going to change the sequence without at least telling you. It doesn't require a vote. I'm just telling you I'm changing the sequence.
And then you had on that, under refusal, you had something marked down?
Okay, so on the refusal, this is a part of our hold-drug testing policy. The sentence that says discipline up to and including termination is the penalty for insubordination, it doesn't really belong there because the first sentence says refusal will be considered a positive test, and the next paragraph says what a positive test gets you, and that's termination.
So it's just double verbiage?
Yeah, and actually, I think it has a little misleading because we're talking about inspiration when really we're counting a positive test. I mean, a refusal is a positive test. So I, I read these and really scrutinize them, and that one I didn't like. So I'm taking that sentence out.
So taking that out, that'll be something to vote to make sure, since it's being changed, or no?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, you're not changing the content again. Again, you're just removing that sentence because the next part of it, we're not changing. But I do show you, because when they roll out, those changes will be made. What I'll do with the ones that you have approved, I'm going to incorporate it into our handbook. I put all of the changes in red, and I send it out to all employees. I keep it in red for 30 days on our, so they can see the changes. And then they all have to sign off that they agree to them. And then once I get those back, it'll go back to all black, and that's our new policy. However, the only other thing I will need you to say is that when you want these into effect, and I suggest that you, when's the next table?
We say March 30th.
I'd like to do it before because I don't want to have any, I don't want to have any special circumstance or closure in that timeframe that we're not following the new thing. So I thought about that afterwards because I did think what we have to do by sign off. But if it's your policy that you're approving, technically, it can go into effect. I say next pay period. So when is that?
The next pay period will start on Sunday.
So February 3rd?
Second.
Second, so.
That's where you want to go and make it.
That's really for payroll crew. I mean, the PTO crew. Everything else we could stand on anyway. I mean, you do have to have employees sign off saying yes, I understand that. If you have an employee who doesn't sign it, we have problems with you, but.
At the beginning of February 2nd, the new rules will apply for them to carry more hours.
It's in their favor too.
Oh, it's a huge favor.
I don't want to, I don't want to say we're going to approve it and then they're going to see it on their paycheck till mid-March, so. But I will roll, I mean, I will do this quickly. I will send this out to all employees, telling them that it's going to affect. I will send this out to all employees, telling them that it's going to affect, oh, gosh, I got to do that tomorrow. I will get that done tomorrow.
Okay, so we should be able to get, we should be able to get everybody to sign off on this. This is the 30th by February the 2nd, so.
Oh, no, that won't. I have my hat to give them a couple of weeks.
Oh, you have to give them a couple of weeks for it to happen.
But that doesn't mean you don't have to put it into effect.
But it goes into effect even though, okay, I got it. Okay, because I want to make sure. I don't think we're going to have bad weather.
But I'll send it out. I will, actually. I'll send it out by tomorrow.
Okay.
And then I'll give everybody two weeks to sign.
Okay, all right. Well.
Then that'll be on Valentine's Day.
That's, I appreciate all the work from the HR, and I appreciate Matty. And you know what? I appreciate everybody who was here today and all the big crowd that was here on Tuesday giving their input and things like that. I think this is a collective project that we made better for our employees and for our county. And so it makes me feel good, so appreciate that very much.
And I will tell you, anytime that someone calls for a policy interpretation or a question throughout the year, I have a big binder, I put a post-it on it, and we look at them every year because we reassess this every year. I will present this to you every, either December or January.
Ms. Amber, one other thing. I was asking Commissioner Johnny that you and I had talked about the employee survey that we do once a year.
I did.
Are you going to report that?
I would have done it, I didn't have time.
Yeah, I figured this took your time.
I do have them, I just don't have it in a pretty presentation.
Well, next week is not going to be a good week because Commissioner Johnny's going to be on vacation, so it'll be just the two of us here.
I'll do it the next, I'll do it the 13th.
So kind of remember the following week.
We'll do it on the 13th. I'll get myself a date.
Yeah. We'll have Commissioner Jackson completely well by then, and he'll be fully alive.
Powering through over.
I won't be one direction or the other, I'm not sure.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is communications, commission communications. And just as I stated, there'll just be, so Ms. Matty on payroll and different things going on, there'll be, but although Johnny's going to be on vacation, he may be able to watch some of the things and okay things, but he'll be here.
He'll sign first.
We'll be here to sign things and stuff like that while one of the commissioners is gone. And then another thing I'd kind of like to make sure, and we've got this live on YouTube, we're going to send out an email today or tomorrow from the commission office. A lot of the elected officials have already done their fourth quarter report, and we really appreciate that. I'm still asking that if there is an elected official that has a quarterly report, fourth quarter, that hasn't done it, I'd like to get them done in February. So we're well on the way in 2025. One of the reasons why I think it's beneficial for the elected official to give those quarterly reports to the commission instead of sending us emails and we read it, is that I love for the public to hear them at the meetings. I love that the public can hear what's going on in each department throughout each quarter because there's a lot more people watching live and then watching it later on. I get people all the time saying they're adding to the watching of our meetings. And so I think it's extremely important. Each of our departments, the employees are doing a very good job, doing great things. We need to let people know what our county's doing in each of these departments, and I think that's a reason. So we'll be sending that email out, yeah.
Can I mention something about SB 190?
Yeah, I was going to say something, so I'll let you.
We are, the sign-up starts next Monday. The mail-out for the renewal are being mailed this Friday. So applicants should be receiving them over the weekend, first of the week, so they can be bringing those in on it. I talked to you guys about, last year we used this as an overflow for the notary, and you'd said that get with Richard and get a key so we can come over and if we need this. We do use the mailroom as where we take around for the notary. So if all the offices, like they did last year, if they work with us and, because when the mail machine's running, you can't hardly do a notary in there with the folks, you can't hardly hear. So if you've got mail to run, get with us and we'll work around with you on it to run it. Give us a call or something, and we'll try to work with us to do the mail, usually early in the morning or later in the afternoon with it to do it. We have set up extra chairs out here in the hallway, trying to get them. Colin, the clerk's office gave us some extra chairs, gave us some little lights to set up a table. And we'll have the new applicants, we'll have those applications available also for them. So there'll be a lot of influx, influx of folks coming in. I have told security about it, so they can be prepared also. Hopefully, not everybody's going to come rushing in here the first day, but I'm afraid a lot of them will. We've been trying to tell them, wait until the weather's a little nicer, it's supposed to be nice next week, so there'll be a lot of them coming. But just giving a heads up, it is that time again, so bear with us. And I appreciate everybody helping us and working with us on it. And we'll have two notaries and be working on that part on it.
Commissioner, so it starts February 3rd and it ends June?
June the 15th.
June 15th.
End of it. And the reason is, is because of cutting the books off and getting everything done on it.
Right.
On that part. And we also have put together a little, with Sandy and the gals, they've put together a little sheet, so, and we're going to try to get it out to all the offices. So everybody's saying the same thing, so we're all on the same page. So when someone comes in, oh, I wasn't told that, then everybody knows that kind of the same message is going out to the people. I know that that isn't what's going to happen, but at least if we've got the same script to kind of say, well, it'll make it a lot easier on it. But if you get calls or something, direct them to my office, direct them to Danny's because we're the ones that's dealing with it, and we can take care of it. And I know the phones, when they're working, will take care of them on it. It will be a busy time.
Yeah, very good. And.
Thank you. I'd like to work with it.
Yeah, well, I tell you what, so the group that meets around this table, the assessor's office, collector's office.
When we have our coffee, we get together.
Yeah, and the clerk's office has done a great job. We have a few changes we'll make in the ordinance that we've passed several times, and they'll be presenting that to us in February. We've already been working with Mr. Fax, our county attorney, on that. And so just to make it better and stuff like that. So that will happen. So I think, I think that's very good. And just the last thing I want to brag about our county is, and not necessarily what the commission's done, but what other people have done, these other elected officials and their staff, is 114 counties in the state, and Christian County, according to Travis Elliott, our state MAC attorney, is the model of the entire state on Senate Bill 190. A lot of counties can't figure this out. They have not got it figured out. There's less than 15 that have approved it. There's several that are trying to prove it, trying to get it passed, but they're arguing with each other and not understanding how the law, how the two Senate bills have changed and things. And lots of counties are coming to see us, are coming to see these guys, and getting real-life experiences of how to make this thing happen. So again, kudos to Christian County and our elected officials for being the leader in this project. So anything else that we need to communicate today?
I just have one question.
Yes.
And we can set this up for a more in-depth discussion on a future agenda, but I heard through the grapevine that at the last MAC board meeting, Travis Elliott proposed a question with regards to the state constitution, bond indebtedness, and how that affects Senate Bill 190. And I didn't know if there was more information with regards to that and how we're going to properly continue to run Senate Bill 190 given tax breaks to our seniors, but not negatively affect the statute with regards to bond indebtedness to those other taxing districts.
Yeah, so when they discussed that at the board meeting, I don't think we know what the courts are, I think we've got to look into it. That could be a serious, that could be a serious issue, and, but I don't, but I agree. I think we need to have some type of work study or something and get everybody involved in it, but we'll try to get more information.
We've already contacted Austin Fax, and we're trying to get an opinion from him right now.
Yeah.
He's looking into the indebtedness part of that. The blind fund, we already know that's not going, that freeze will occur on the blind fund, but on the indebtedness, we don't know. And so we're waiting to see what his opinion is.
Okay.
Right.
At this time, he's looking at that, you know, that's continuing like we are at this time.
Yeah.
It's his opinion at this time, but he's researching it more.
Okay, well, I guess.
So we're working.
Mr. Elliott had a discussion, and I was, would assume, pardon me, I guess I'm talking too fast, I'll start choking. I would assume that this may be some breakout session at the CCAM conferences coming up at the end of this month.
I bet we'll know.
To give us more guidance, but I know that it's popped up and it's obviously raised some question. I just want to make sure that we're putting ourselves in the proper positioning that it doesn't negatively impact.
We're aware of it.
Okay. I hadn't heard anything until I had heard from a friend of mine out of another county that this was brought up at the MAC board meeting and.
Our collectors, we've been talking about it, and there's legislation, and they've talked, and it's one of those things that no one knows for sure.
Okay. All right.
All right, very good.
Glad to know that you guys are already on top of it. Appreciate that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we will.
Don't turn.
Don't turn.
I saw you reach for the graphics, the gavel, and I'm like, don't.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to RSMO 610.021.